Okay, we're going to get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Sure. This meeting is being held in the form of the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 7, 2023. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserve the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices while in the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please write for the question.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Cattamator, Mr. Delator, Mr. Grana, Mr. Grana?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Mr. Kieran?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, we are first going to start with the recognition portion of our meeting, so I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
May is an incredibly busy month, but I would like to begin by celebrating and acknowledging the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community, as well as the Jewish-American community as we honor their contributions to our great country. I am delighted to bring greetings to all in attendance and a warm welcome to the members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community members, students, and their very special guests this evening, their families. In a few minutes, I will be introducing our talented principals and some vice principals as they will take the podium to share detailed information and wonderful anecdotes about the students being honored here tonight. This evening, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of our students who are being celebrated as Students of the Month for the month of April. You will hear about unrelenting effort and powerful results. These students were driven to succeed, and their efforts have certainly paid off. We are so proud of each of you and can't wait to hear about your current academic journey and your plans for your future. We will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School and its proud principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, and he will follow this same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Vice Principal Lawrence, Vice Principal Dr. Baskinger, and Principal Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School. Each will celebrate their school's selection and, of course, pause for a picture opportunity. Again, thank you for being here with us this evening, and with that, I would ask Mr. Bartlett to join me at the podium.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. At this time, I would like to ask Bree Newby to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Bree Newby, the Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month for April 2023. Bree is a fifth grader and was nominated by her homeroom teacher, Mrs. Gant. Mrs. Gant said, "Bree is a quiet leader in school and especially the classroom. She shines every day when coming into class. She's built friendships and made connections with each student in our class. Bree shows a growth mindset by asking questions until she understands. She takes responsibility for mistakes and learns from them. She likes a good challenge, wants to succeed, and has great patience and honesty when working with others. She tries to include everyone in an activity or game. Bree comes to school on time, showing her determination and dedication in school. She is a very hard worker, studies at home, and always turns in work on time. She has a great attitude towards adults and her classmates. Bree has amazing patience with others and holds herself to a high personal standard." Mrs. Gant said the following quote by Arthur Ashe reminds her of Bree and her approach to her schoolwork. "Success is a journey, not a destination. As principal, I've very much enjoyed watching Bree on her journey with us. She is one of those students who quietly gets the job done and is a role model for all. I don't doubt she will go on to find continued success in her middle and high school careers. Even though she might speak softly, her grades, accomplishments, and hard work speak volumes. As she is always willing to help out, Bree helped create the Winter Wonderland Store poster for the PTO Holiday Sale and is also a fifth-grade peer mentor. Bree is an asset to our school community because as a responsible, honest, and respectful student and friend, she is always thinking of others and how she can help her family and friends have a better day. That embodies the Brandt way, helping others whenever you can, no matter how small of a deed it may be. Bree plays trombone in the Brandt Band. Outside of school, she has a white belt in karate..." You just started, huh? "...Bree has a white belt in karate, and Bree's hobbies include creating video games and comic books. Her favorite subject is FizEd and favorite activity in FizEd is hockey. Bree wants to go to college after high school, she's not sure which one yet, and become a game programmer. When asked about how she felt when receiving this honor, Bree had a very short response, but one that, again, speaks volumes about her character. She said, 'Honesty is key.' And I'll be honest with you now, Bree, we have no doubt that you will go on to do wonderful and beautiful things with your gifts and talents.'" Please join me in a round of applause for our Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month for April, Bree Newby. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Vice Principal of the Connor School, Mr. Jack Hamlin.
Good evening. And at this time, I'd like to call up Elias Hanna, the Connor Student of the Month for the month of April. Elias is a fourth grader in Ms. Schultz and Ms. Goodwin's class. Ms. Schultz and Ms. Goodwin shared that Elias is a dedicated and enthusiastic student. He asks thoughtful questions about the topics discussed in class and extends the application of the skills. Elias has embraced the fourth grade this year, often exceeding the expectations in reading, writing, math, and critical thinking skills. He's a dedicated student that consistently completes his work and challenges himself to extend his learning. Elias is interested in many topics, including reading, math, and science. He received academic honors this marking period. He excels in many areas and loves to challenge himself on a daily basis, showing different ways to solve a problem. He enjoys sharing his strategies with the class and enjoys participating in discussions. Elias is a kind young man that is dedicated to his family. He loves his mother, father, and his twin brother Greg. Elias enjoys reading and can be found reading a variety of genres in class. He reads fiction and nonfiction books, often making connections between his personal reading and the lessons in class, as well as asking thoughtful questions. Elias loves graphic novels and series like Wings of Fire. In addition to his love of learning, Elias enjoys playing organized baseball, playing video games, and playing outside with his brother Greg and his dad. When he has time to relax, he enjoys reading a book. His favorite subject in school is science because he says it's interesting. Elias would love to travel to France because he wants to see the Eiffel Tower and try the pastries. Fantastic. When asked where he wanted to go to college, he said he wasn't ready to make that decision yet, and he's got plenty of time to decide what he'll do in the future. Elias was excited when he was told that he was receiving the honor of District Student of the Month for Connor School. He couldn't wait to inform his family. When asked about how he felt to win the award and attend Connor School, he replied, "It's amazing. It's my first time getting District Student of the Month. I love being at Connors because I love all of my friends and I have lots of fun." His parents shared how incredibly proud they are of Elias. He's grown academically, and his success can be attributed to his perseverance, determination, natural curiosity, and grit. They love how Elias has a tremendous heart and how he's so kind to everyone around him. He has empathy and is always looking to include everyone and goes out of his way to make them feel comfortable. His parents adore his easygoing nature and say that he's such a good all-around kid. And Elias, we think you are such a good all-around kid, too. We're so proud of your tremendous growth and your tremendous heart, and we're proud to call you a Connor's koala. Please join me in congratulating Elias Hanna. I'd like now to introduce to the podium the Vice Principal of Wallace Elementary School, Elizabeth Lawrence.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Sam Yudin to join me at the podium. We are here tonight to celebrate Sam Yudin, the Wallace Elementary School Student of the Month for April 2023. Sam sets a positive example in the classroom and throughout the Wallace School community. He shows great respect for his teachers and fellow Wildcats. He is kind, and his quiet manner are just two of the many characteristics that allow him to serve as a positive role model each and every day. Sam also roars at Wallace by helping to create a classroom environment that is a safe and enjoyable place for all students to learn and grow. He is courteous, considerate, and always willing to lend a helping hand. As a scholar, Sam demonstrates his commitment to academics through his readiness to learn and his eagerness to tackle challenging tasks. He comes to school prepared and completes all of his assignments carefully and thoughtfully. He enjoys reading aloud and participating actively in the classroom, whether it's to answer a question in math class or contribute his thoughts during class discussions. Sam is also a wonderful writer. He is known for his attention to detail, the emotion he includes in his narrative writing, and his vibrant use of vocabulary. Although this credit is due to his diligent work ethic, these writing skills are also a result of his love of reading. Sam considers reading to be his best-love hobby outside of school and carefully takes notes about craft from his favorite author. Currently, his favorite book is Dog Man by Dave Bilkeny. At Wallace Elementary School, we also look for Students of the Month who excel both academically and socially. Sam is a perfect example of this. He holds himself at a high standard while displaying care and compassion for all, even when it comes to sports. In physical education classes, while playing his favorite sport basketball, or during Taekwondo classes, Sam exudes sportsmanship. Fun fact about Sam: He is currently a Green Belt and proudly reports that winning a medal in Taekwondo is one of his greatest achievements. Ms. Meza continued to celebrate Sam by saying, "I first met Sam as a kindergartner. He was curious, shy, and eager to learn and figure out his new school and community." As a kindergartner, Sam knew how to read in Russian, and over time, it has become evident that he is also skilled at connecting his learnings to real-life scenarios that prompt reflection on his own role as a global citizen. Sam's presence in his classroom, as well as his leadership skills, have truly brought so much to our Wallace community. His ethics stem from his incredibly kind and education-centered parents. They center the home culture and support Sam in creating balance. Sam, we look forward to being a witness to your continued evolution as an academic. Please join me in congratulating Sam, our Wallace School Student of the Month for April. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Baskinger, Vice Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Please welcome to the podium Hoboken Middle School's April Student of the Month, Emerson Blishki Villavencio. Emerson is an eighth-grade student who was nominated by Ms. Mendoza for his motivation in the classroom. Emerson's motivation to try new things in the classroom environment is inspiring. Emerson always gives 100% effort, which is a quality that makes him a model student for his peers. Emerson is always prepared, engaged in the lessons. His participation in class discussion contributes greatly to a positive classroom learning experience. Ms. Jettie adds that Emerson is an intellectually curious, dedicated, and hard-working student. He can always be counted on to tackle each assignment with a focus and drive that allows him to excel in every content area. Emerson is described by his teachers as polite, respectful, and wise beyond his years. Emerson is also a member of our National Junior Honor Society, an HMS Ambassador, and has been involved in a theater program since elementary school. Emerson was recently selected as an HMS Ambassador for incoming sixth-grade students. During the elementary school visits to HMS several weeks ago, Emerson helped facilitate a series of activities for our future Tigers. Ms. Falcone shares that Emerson's demonstrated leadership and his abundant knowledge of HMS and its programs make him the epitome of what an HMS Ambassador should be. Emerson has been a dedicated member of the theater program since elementary school. Ms. Miller shares that she has had the pleasure of being able to watch Emerson grow up into a creative masterpiece. Emerson marches to the beat of his own drum, but in an admirable way. He has innate acting abilities that cannot be taught, but above all, Emerson is kind, compassionate, and extremely hardworking. I can always count on him, and he is always willing to help others. He always tells me that he looks up to me, but I equally look up to him. Please come see him as Squidward in SpongeBob the Musical next weekend. His performance will be brilliant. Emerson and his friends gave a memorable performance of Elvis, "I Can't Help Falling in Love With You." At this year's Tigers Got Talent, I was there. It was good. Emerson's talent show group members would like to share a few words about their good friend. Tyler Mara states, "I have known Emerson for a while, and we have so much fun together. He is a great friend." Gabriel echoes Tyler's sentiments. "Emerson is the nicest friend I have, and it is truly honored to be friends with him. Doing the talent show with him was amazing and would be fun to do it with him again. He is also one of the smartest people I know." Emerson is truly an asset to Hoboken Middle School, and as an eighth-grade student, he exemplifies what it is to be a good role model for other grade levels in the building. Emerson inspires others to go into each day with Tiger pride. Please join me in congratulating Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month, Emerson Blishki Villavencio. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Pica Pietra, the Principal of Hoboken High School, to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Yuselyn Dominguez to the podium. She is our sophomore Student of the Month for April. I remember Yuselyn is a quiet lady that used to skin in every morning with me when I did door duty last year, but since Mr. Poncay and Mr. Williams have taken that over, I kind of have lost track. This year, I see Yuselyn has definitely come out of her shell and is exploding academically. Her teachers have nothing but praise. Nominated by Ms. Stevens, she described Yuselyn as a hard worker who always has her work done in time, to the best of her ability. She uses class time wisely and consistently participates in class. She asks questions, seeks clarity when needed, and helps other students stay on track. She moved up from CP to pre-AP this year and is doing an excellent job. She is cheerful, kind, and a delight to have in class. Mr. Labag added, "I am not all surprised that Yuselyn has won Student of the Month. She is such a hard-working student. I've seen so much growth in her. I recommended her for AP Biology, and she has worked so hard and is one of the top students in the class. She always gives 100% on every assignment, participates actively, and has made a great effort to learn the material at a very deep level. She is polite, personable, and always greets me when she comes into my room every day. She's truly a pleasure to have." This week during our AP exam review and preparation, she said, "No matter what happens on the AP Bio test, I learned so much this year. This shows how much she values learning and the personal growth, and I'm extremely proud of her." We'll make this quick because she has to go home and study for AP Bio. Ms. Wilson, her pre-AP geometry teacher, also had some great things to add. An exceptional student, focused, hard-working, and extremely dedicated to her studies. Not only does she do great work for herself, but she helps others at any given chance without being asked and always advocates for herself and those around her. In addition to her educational prowess, she is also exceptionally kind and happy every time you interact with her. I am very proud to have her as my student. As you can hear, Yuselyn is challenging herself this year. She went from all college preparatory classes as a freshman and added AP US 1, AP Bio, and Pre-AP English 2. That is unheard of. While most will try to add an AP or a Pre-AP course, not Yuselyn, she went above and beyond and looks like she will end the year with a GPA of 4.25. So, what does the rock star have to say? Her best experience at Hoboken High School would be meeting new people and taking new and harder classes that I've never even knew of. I laughed at her response to the next one, "At what drives her to do so well? The fact that I'm stuck with school for four years, I might as well spend my time wisely." Brilliant. She wants to go on to study nursing, either at Rutgers or Felician. In her downtime, she enjoys reading and playing soccer. The person I hang out with the most is Yasleen, and she believes it is because they push each other to do what is best for one another. That is a great friendship. Yuselyn loves working with little kids and playing soccer, and she is confident in her future as a nurse, but she is also considering building her own brand. We all have faith in you to continue to grow and take on new challenges. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight. You only have a few more weeks, or maybe six more weeks of school, so keep up the great work and enjoy your summer. And Yuselyn, best of luck to you on the AP Bio test tomorrow. I'm sure you're gonna do great. Now, I'd like to invite Olivia Dunn, our representative from Hoboken Middle School, up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Dunn, and I am here to report on all the fun and exciting things that happened at Hoboken Middle School during the months of March and April. During the month of March, the Student Council participated in a bingo leadership challenge in which they were given specific acts of leadership that they were tasked to complete each week. Tasks included things like show appreciation for custodians and help your teacher tidy up. In April, the Student Council, along with the amazing help of PTO and administration, hosted the grade-level dances. It was certainly night filled with glitz and glamour as we strutted down the red carpet at a night in Hollywood. The PTO announced that they will be hosting golf outlining in June to help raise money for the PTO. They are also promoting their second booster wall for anyone who would like to purchase a booster and be a part of their wall. Our sixth-grade students are participating in "We're Not Buying It" program for March 17th through May 5th. This program is offered by Partners Improvement, which aims strength Hudson County through the evidence-based primary prevention. Programs that feature real-life situations and build on educational assets, teaching students important life skills. Our students have also been vigorously preparing for the district-wide musical, the SpongeBob Musical. They have been working tirelessly to make sure that they put on their best show. Show dates will be May 19th, 20th, and 21st. The HMS Passport Learning Program has been seeing some new and exciting things as well. HMS was practiced here that the NJSLA enrichment and prep course will be available to sixth through eighth-grade students. Math and ELI courses were available for all students who take part in. Students will be putting all their hard work and dedication to this test this month. We saw the introduction of new clubs like Streetwear Startup, which gives students the opportunity to express themselves through the creation of exciting, fun fabric patterns. They also learn techniques like how to sew. During the month of April, the students experimented with a variety of fabrics and design methods such as dyeing fabric squares and phases using protection. They also began coming up with ideas for their large-scale sewing project. The members of the rock climbing practice practiced their sky-high skills by learning new climbing techniques like top rope ballet. We also saw the reintroduction of swimming at HMS. Students practiced some bigger beginner skills like floating and blowing bubbles while their more advanced members worked on techniques like freestyle and competing in length of the pool, backstroke, and fins. Some students even began learning how to dive. Our Best Buddies Club celebrated people for their differences by sponsoring a Rock Your Socks event for World Down Syndrome. They also participated in a Best Buddies Friendship Walk on May 7th. They also sold consents for the HMS faculty and parents versus HMS students' basketball game. During the month of April, in supportive Autism Awareness Month, our very own Alex Solara gave a moving and powerful speech at the City Hall in our morning announcements. The HMS GSA Club celebrated Women's History Month by learning about influential LGBTQ plus women across history and Creative Magazine covers to highlight their accomplishments. They also recognized Transgender Day of Visibility by learning about the history of the world. During the month of April, GSA held a game day in celebration of spring. Our yearbooks continue to collect baby pictures of eighth graders for the final yearbook. We can't wait to see all their cute little faces. In April, the Yearbook Club finally submitted their final edition of 2022 through 2023 yearbooks. The academic team competed in their final National Current Events League. The academic team competed in their final National Current Events League mid of the year. They also prepared for a competed in National Language Arts League competition. Congratulations to all who participated. In April, exciting news rocked the teams of seventh graders who won second place at the National Current Event League and the eighth-grader team who became third place, the Tigers. The HMS Chorus Club picked up and began practicing two songs, "I Want It That Way" by Backstreet Boys and "Before I Go" by Louis C. Pauldy, which they will be performing at the Thrills and Trails Festival at Six Flags on June 1st and the Spring Concert on 6 through 4. We're looking forward to hearing all the beautiful voices of our students. The HMS Band worked on another song that they will be performing at Trails and Thrills Festival at Six Flags, as well as the Middle Schooler Festival on April 25th. Their selection currently consists of two songs, Mission Impossible and Dark Ride. Finally, the Hoboken Middle School hosted an HMS Faculty and Parents versus HMS Students Basketball Game. The competition was fierce, but in the end, our faculty and parents proved to be too much force for the students to handle. Nevertheless, our students put up a good fight with our students like Keanu Brugam, Felicity Delara, Noah Hyman, and Alex Walker, storm bazzies, scoring points throughout the game. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you, and we look forward to bring all the exciting news from May to next meeting.
Thank you, Olivia, for that great update. Sounds like so much is happening at HMS, and I did see some pictures from the dances, and it looked like everyone was having a great time. So, we look forward to having you back next month. Next, I'd like to ask Naomi Cook up to the podium, our Hoboken High School Student Government Representative.
Hello. My name is Naomi Cook. I am the Hoboken High School Student Government Board Representative. It is an honor to speak with you tonight. The Hoboken High School Student Government and Hoboken High School Student Activities Office had a productive and busy month. This past month, with a successful morning announcements program, class council meetings, organizational meetings, pediatric cancer fundraiser, AAPI, and Jewish-American heritage flag raisings. The high school's been busy with AP testing since May 1st, and we are gearing up for the NJSLA assessments beginning Monday, May 15th. We want to keep this report brief for this month. Pancakes for Prom. The Class of 2023 is holding a Pancakes for Prom breakfast on Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM in the Hoboken High School cafeteria. The cost is $10 for adults and $5 for students. Come down and enjoy some pancakes and support the senior class of 2023. National Honor Society. Angeline Velosi, HHS Class of 2019, Stevens Institute of Technology Class of 2023, returned to the Hoboken High School on May 3rd to pick up $450 raised by Red Wings to benefit the National Network of Specialized Children's Hospitals. Stevens students raised funds for this organization annually through the Stevens-a-Thon Dance Marathon. NHS members of HHS helped set up the dance in April and then raised funds through a school-wide dress down. Our contribution put the Stevens group over their goal of $46,000. Angeline was NHS president in 2018 to 2019, and as we know, once a Red Wing, always a Red Wing. Yearbook Club. The yearbook staff is proud to announce that the Class of 2023 Yearbook is complete. The process has been quite a learning experience for all club members. We would like to thank Mrs. McGreevy for leading us and keeping us focused throughout the year. Debate Program. The Hudson County Champion Red Wings Mock Trial Team went home with Hudson County Courthouse as they celebrated Law Day and the winners of the Hudson County Bar Association County contests, including Hoboken High School's Debate Team Program's Mock Trial County Championship for 2023. It was a rewarding experience for the team to receive the recognition of the 2023 Hudson County Mock Trial Champions. Athletics. The Student Government is gearing up for our Spring Pepper Rally that will take place at the end of May. We have a lot to be excited about. The Red Wings Baseball Team are the 2023 National Division Champions. We just had a successful softball senior night, and Coach Vinnie Johnson just celebrated his 100th career win. The Boys Volleyball Team just won their eighth game of the season. The eight wins set a school record for most wins in the season for the Boys Volleyball Team. The JV Volleyball Team is 12-4. Freshman Volleyball is 6-1. The lacrosse teams are improving with every game. The Track Teams preparing for the championship meets. Oh yes, we have a lot to be excited about at the nest. Note, the senior prom is Thursday, June 1st. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you. We look forward to seeing you at our events. Go Red Wings!
Thank you, Naomi, for your wonderful update. Looking forward to Pancakes for Prom this Saturday. And next, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to thank the students and staff for working so diligently during this month of standardized tests. Both Advanced Placement and NJSLA testing are underway, as is our Kaplan SAT Prep Program. If you haven't seen our district rankings, I thought it would be important to report out that Hoboken was, in fact, the only district in Hudson County, other than the Hudson County Schools of Technology, to show great improvement from 2018-19 to 2021-22 in both math and language arts. And Hoboken High School's summative rating from 2017-18 to 21-22 rose 78 places in the high school ranking system. This is the largest growth shown in Hudson County. I was also pleased to see that Hoboken Middle School was ranked 13th out of 103 schools in Hudson County, followed by Connors at number 14 and Wallace at number 17. There are so many exciting things that are happening across the district. This is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and we certainly are showing our appreciation. We kick the week off with a flower and plant bar in every school, and now the PTOs and school administrators are jumping in with tokens of gratitude as well. I would like to congratulate two steam tank teams from Connors Elementary School and two Hoboken Middle School steam tank teams that have all made it to the June 2nd State Semifinals in the steam tank competition. I'm also extremely proud to announce that this year's National Honor Society induction that will be held on June 6th, looks like it's going to be introducing close to 45 new inductees, which is fantastic. And we also praise our 137 grades 2-8 students who were found eligible for and completing their Johns Hopkins Center for Talented Youth courses at this time. I'd also like to congratulate our Class of 2023. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more updates between now and the end of the school year, but I would like to congratulate them for earning upwards of $15 million in college and university merit scholarships. We look forward to our upcoming Local Scholarship and Awards Night, which is going to be held on June 8th. There's a ton of wonderful acceptances that will be announced at that awards night. And in fact, we have a number of college tours that took place this school year, but I wanted to point out that we do have a group that is right now out and about and participating in a historically black college tour. On another note, there's a lot of district-wide partnerships that I would like to point out that our administrators, staff, and students are engaged in, and these are some new ones that we haven't really talked about so far this year. The district right now is partnering with both Fairleigh Dickinson University and Montclair State University in a Computer Science for All Professional Development Program. We just recently wrote our letter of support for Stevens Institute of Technologies' National Science Foundation grant for an engineering research program that would engage high school students in engineering research. We have a number of students who have already applied for the PSENG Summer Energy Abounds Program at Stevens University. And finally, we have students who have applied for and will be participating in both the Stevens Summer Aces Program and the Early College Program. This year's LEAP and Extended School Year programs are set to close out their registration at the end of this week. This year's LEAP program was done a little bit differently. We offered our course selections in a little bit of a different way. This year, we tried to offer more vendor-based courses for our summer program than we've ever really had before, and this was based on parent input. We were a little bit overzealous with the number of courses we were offering, but it's interesting because our total enrollment numbers for LEAP are higher than they've ever been before, but we do have a few classes that will not run as a result of low enrollment. So, some courses with really high enrollment, some courses with a little bit of lower enrollment. We think that in '23-'24, we're definitely going to minimize the number of courses so that we do not be put in a situation, again, where some people are not getting the courses that they registered for. Finally, we hosted our lottery for our new dual-language pilot program, and I'm extremely happy to say that we will be running one full class of dual-language at Connors in kindergarten. We will be running two full classrooms at Wallace in kindergarten, two full classrooms at Brandt, and we have 22 students on the pending placement list. Our pre-K numbers, I pretty much will report out pre-K and kindergarten numbers every few meetings. I just would like to inform the board and the community that our pre-K numbers are looking really good for next year. Our pre-K 3 enrollment is back up to 527 students. Our pre-K 4 enrollment is at 468 students, and our overall kindergarten enrollment number has hit 323 students. Lastly, I would like to wish our students who are participating in the SpongeBob production the best of luck. The district musical will take place between May 19th and the 21st. It's always a treat, so I recommend that everyone grab their tickets to be able to see the show. I look forward to reporting out more accomplishments and news across the district at our next board meeting.
I'm really proud of the progress the district has made in our school rankings. So, thank you for that update. Before we begin the business portion of our meeting, we're just gonna take a two-minute break in case any families would like to scoot out and get home to bed. So, we will resume the meeting in one to two minutes. Thank you. Congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight.
This is horrible. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's a dish.
Next, we're gonna go into committee reports. Ms. Good does not have a report tonight, so we will start with curriculum. Ms. McGurk.
Good evening. The Curriculum Committee met on May 4th at 1:00 PM. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Mr. Klupfeld, Ms. Norwood, and myself. There are five items on this evening's agenda for curriculum, and we recommend all for board approval. You'll see a handful of grant submissions, approval of field trips, and also assemblies. A lot of the items that I was going to cover and that the committee also discussed outside of the agenda were things that our middle school, high school, and Superintendent Dr. Johnson brought up, but certainly wishing the best of luck to all of our students involved in AP testing over the coming weeks. As was mentioned a couple times this evening, Biology is taking place tomorrow. The NJSLA testing began for the elementary school students this week and will be continuing into next week. So, this week is ELA and math for grades 3, 4, and 6. Next week is ELA and math for grades 5, 7, 8, and the high school. And then, on the 22nd of May through the 26th, will be science, which is only for grades 5, 8, and 11. The district is engaging in Kaplan SAT Test Prep that's been funded by the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. It is an online format with a live instructor that allows for flexibility as students are able to attend sessions that work around their very busy schedules. The inaugural field trip sponsored by the Hoboken Public Education Foundation happened Monday of last week, and the students will be headed out on a variety of trips over the coming weeks, and we hope they all have a wonderful and educational experience. This upcoming Thursday night will be Family Health Night, which is a focus on puberty. It's going to be at Hoboken High School for fifth-grade students, but for the lecture that will be given by Dr. Temple, that is open to families in grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Project Lead the Way at Hoboken Middle School for the coming month of May through June, there will be an engineering focus that will be taught during one of their math periods, so we're very excited to hear about that. Summer assignments are going to be updated in the coming weeks, and everyone will be hearing about those and undoubtedly experiencing the joy and/or anxiety that goes with your children completing their summer assignments. I know in our house, some is joy, some is anxiety. And then, we want to wish the best of luck to the teams from HMS and Connors that are in the Steam Tank Finals. And I did want to take a moment and recognize Teacher Appreciation Week. I have to say, a couple weeks ago, my favorite teacher from high school passed away, and it had me reflecting upon the impact that good teachers have in our lives. I probably wouldn't be sitting here for a variety of reasons if I had never had Mr. Trimble as a teacher, but I look around the teachers in our district, and I see so many people who embody that zeal for learning and energy and commitment to their students and the kind of love that they bring to the classroom every day that helps drive the kids in this district to achieve more and strive to be their best selves. And I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of our teachers for everything you do every single day for our students and to all of our staff as well. You make it a very, very special place for our kids to go to school, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk. Next, we'll move on to facilities. Ms. Connor.
Yes, thank you. And Aileen, I couldn't have said it better. The Facilities Committee met on Thursday, May 4th at 2:00 PM. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Ms. Norwood, Mr. Klupfeld, and myself. There are two agenda items for facilities this month, and we recommend both for board approval. 12.01 is a fire and safety drill for April, and 12.02 is a facilities request. We have two requests, Hive and Zog's boards. Lastly, renovation. Lastly, renovation of four bathrooms at Wallace will begin soon, and work on the dance studio at Hoboken High School will commence this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Clubfeld.
Thank you. The committee did meet on Friday, May 5. Joining me were Mr. El Torre, Ms. Norwood, Ms. Angley, Ms. Lopez, Ms. Good, and Dr. Johnson. The committee did review all items on the agenda and recommend them for approval, including 10.08, which we discussed, but I didn't touch on in my report over the weekend because it was a late addition to the agenda only yesterday afternoon. And that is the approval of the district auditor for the 23-24 fiscal year. Do want to acknowledge the donations, especially the $14,000 from the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, which makes it possible for all of our students to take that SAT prep, which I think Ms. McGurk touched on. That's a significant contribution, directly helps so many students. And finally, item 10.12 is approval of the 2023-2024 budget, which remains unchanged from the public presentation that was made last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn to Dr. Johnson. You have a few words.
Before the Governance and Personnel Report, I just want to do a required presentation of our HIB self-assessment. So each year around this time, districts are required to report out what the harassment, intimidation, and bullying self-assessment scores are. This assessment is out of a total of 78 points. The district's score was 75 out of 78 points. And it's based upon different categories, such as programming for anti-bullying, professional development, and also reporting mechanisms that are in place. So in addition to the district's score being 75 out of 78, Hoboken High School scored 76 points out of 78. Hoboken Middle School, 74 out of 78. Wallace, 75 out of 78. Connors, 75 out of 78. And Brandt, 74 out of 78. So it's important to know that every public school district in the state of New Jersey is required to report out these scores. And each year, we see our district progressing in these areas. And I'm very pleased with what our scores look like this year.
Great. Thank you very much. And next, we'll move on to Governance. Ms. Takirian.
Good evening. The Governance and Personnel Committee met on Thursday, May 4. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the school year, you will see a number of agenda items for leave requests, appointments, transfers, and resignations of teachers and other personnel. In tonight's agenda, this includes paraprofessionals, custodial staff, teachers, substitutes, as well as roles to support extended school year, ESY, and other summer activities, including teachers, paraprofessionals, nurses for the ESY and the evaluation of students and IEP work that happens throughout the summer. A few other items of note. Want to point out the approval of volunteers for the Theater Department for the District of Hoboken and approval of volunteers for the Music Department. Special thanks to all parents and guardians who generously give your time as volunteers to support the district's theater and music programs. Each of you are essential members of the team that allows these programs to thrive. Also want to point out that you'll see the approval of scholarships for the graduating class of 2023. These are the local scholarships. So congratulations to all our students who have received scholarships and awards. And many thanks to the individuals and organizations who provide generous support for Hoboken High School seniors through these scholarship programs. Lastly, I'd like to point out the approval of appointments for next school year of non-tenured, certificated Hoboken Education Association employees, non-tenured, non-certificated HEA staff, non-tenured, certificated HASA staff, hourly-at-will, full-time, non-certificated HSEA staff, and tenured, non-certificated HEA staff, as well as 10-month, part-time HSEA staff. This is for the 2023-2023-2024 school year. So a lot of appointments there, and a bunch of items on the agenda are in that category. And then lastly, as usual, there are agenda items for a variety of workshops for district staff, including the following workshops that enhance the skills and networks of participants, the Hudson County GNT Consortium, and the Community of Practice for Educators working in the 18- to 21-year-old programs. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, just have a few words to say. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, and their teams in developing a budget that meets all contractual obligations to our amazing staff that fully funds the district programming and absorbs revenue reductions from state aid losses and promised pilot payments not received. As discussed last week, the impact of the budget the board will be voting on tonight is an increase of $12 per year, per $100,000 in assessed valuation. Thank you for proposing a budget that is fair to both our students and staff and to the Hoboken community. I'd also like to wish our teachers and staff a Happy Appreciation Week. We are so grateful for everything you do and for who you are. And next, we will move on to public comments on agenda items only.
Mr. President Zano?
That's on agenda. It's nobody on agenda.
Nobody on agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Tomlin.
Ms. Tomlin? Ms. Connor?
Yeah.
And you made the second? Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Kirian?
Yes.
Mrs. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public comments on both agenda and non-agenda items. And while you're making your way down to the podium, I will read my little thing that I read before public comment. Just a reminder before we open for public comments, over the years and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during the public comment portion of this meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve the speaker from liability for any defamatory comments that an employee may bring against the speaker. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. I also want to remind speakers of board policy. Please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and then Ms. Katamatory will quietly motion with 30 seconds left. Welcome.
Thank you. Paul President Zano, 218 Hudson Street. I thought, being that it's the end of the school year, I thought this is a good time to come and see you guys. It's on a positive note, so you can sit back and relax. Last year, my wife and I were merely taxpayers, and we were looking in from the outside. We weren't privy to the emails or the alerts that we get now. But now, as pre-K parents at Rue, we see firsthand the work done in our schools. It's a pleasure to be informed and see Hoboken students' success, their events, and their progress. However, I'd like to push for more. I have spoken to some of you about this. We need a newsletter, an email, or an outreach program that's not just for parents and guardians, but gives a general overview to the Hoboken taxpayer. As we all know, education is the backbone of a successful community, which I don't have to teach you guys that. We must keep our taxpayers informed and engaged in our school's work. By doing so, we can ensure that our community remains strong and thriving for the generations to come. On a lighter note, it might actually add to some of the attendance at sporting events, theater productions, and student fundraisers to help fund some of the kids' things that they do. There's one thing that the community has asked for in the time that I've been involved, and it's transparency. And they want more information. Hopefully, my suggestion of this outreach is either in the works, or it's something that you'll consider. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Eldreka?
Mary Eldreka, 159 Ninth Street. This is really an informative thing I'd like to speak about. First of all, there's no legal... Sorry, there's no official cannabis place open yet. But Village at 516 Washington is 460 feet from this school. And I wanted to... Obviously, you're aware of it. It's passed. Plenty more passed it. We just have to wait for the council. And of course, they passed them all. So it will come into fruition. And I think it's important that I'm asking this question is, will you be informing the parents of this school that this indeed opens up when it opens? And it's, like I said, you can't view it from this school, but Washington's that way. It's right over the next block. So that's important because children today grow up in a world that I didn't. I could choose who I hung out with who smoked pot. Just yesterday's paper, there's an article, discarded marijuana joints are causing big increase in poisonings, and that's with dogs. So we have yet to feel the manifestation of legal pot shops. I don't care if you smoke it. That's anybody's business. I don't think children should be smoking it or be exposed to it so extremely. It will affect their lives for the rest of their lives. I've got an incredible memory, and that's because I wasn't around people who smoked pot, and I didn't smoke it. But the people I know my age that did smoke it, their memories are really bad. Now, that's one thing. As well as the next thing I want to bring to your attention because this is going to be a crisis beyond belief. The city is, of course, in trauma with the lack of a director. Another director will go on a pregnancy leave within a couple of months, I believe. I'm not sure. I don't know how far along she is. But we will not have anyone addressing the problems of the lanternflies and the rats. And the lanternflies do bring rats too because of the honeydew that excretes from them. I'm saying this because I'm very attuned to what the damage is. I have already, as of May 5, killed over 60. They are 1/16 of an inch in size. If you see them, tell your children to be aware of them, to go to the government, to tell them. The municipality has to work with the county because they will make our lives miserable because at this point, it will be a plague. They bring rats. We have a rat problem. These are all quality of life issues. So I think it's important, as a citizen, I'm going to pound on this, but like I said, I can't stop the pot shops. But you as adults and parents, whoever you... If you're all parents, I believe you all are, please address this and tell your children to think for themselves. Make their own decisions and don't fall prey to the pressures of peers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it.
That's it. That's it.
Okay, next, we are going to be going into executive session now for the purpose of discussing matters covered under attorney-client privilege. We won't be taking any action. It should be about 30 minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, it is now 8:28, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Mr. Grana?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. Takirian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion closed.
Okay, I was going to say, with no further business, do I have a motion, but I've got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.